Read the notice that was published.
Hey Ryan, before we do that, Ryan, are the participants in? Did they hear Mark?
They can hear me up there, which is like audience members. So once they're ready to basically speak, they just need to raise their hand in the app and then I can pull them over as panelists.
Okay. So let's read the official notice at this point. Bethany, do you have the official notice there?
I have it.
To give the... If somebody has it, maybe Brian, if you could read it. Do you have it? Okay, do you want to read the official notice?
Okay, so this is Brian Hill, Clerk, the zoning board. So this was July 46th and July 3rd, Mass Live. East Loma Zoning Board of Appeals Public Hearing, the East Loma Zoning Board of Appeals will hold a public hearing on July 13th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Via Zoom webinar with a meeting link attached and phone access attached as well. A petition for variance under East Loma by law 3.302 fences or walls. It can be for the installation of a solid eight-foot fence in the front setback at 176 Chestnut Street. Assessors, personal ID 29-58A-A. The Residence A, Zoning District, applicant Glenn Hasty, Rock 321, East Loma Mass 01028. Information related to the application is on file with public inspection at the Office of Planning and Community Development. Tell it to the center square at Main Upper 525400 and receive an electronic version of my file, this is submitted for myself, Brian Hill Clerk.
Okay, it's now, if the petitioners want to join the meeting and speak in favor of what they're looking for and why?
Pulling them in right now.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, here we go. Hello, okay, so I'm Samantha Marslack. I'll be speaking on behalf of Glenn and I at 176 Chestnut Street in East Loma. Basically, we're requesting the variance due to, the house has been, is set back from Chestnut Street, 800 feet back. So the other houses on Chestnut Street are at a normal distance from the street. So basically, what we're asking is if we could utilize the backyards of the houses on Chestnut Street as our setback to put that fence up.
Yeah, and I just wanted to make sure, I just had a question on the picture. That in terms of fence that we're proposing to put up, we're looking to put up 88 linear feet, basically running from Chestnut Street to the, I guess, to the corner of the lot at 1, is that 180? Or 180, I think. I can't read that number, it was a 186. But the house, if you're looking at it from the right.
Yes, yes.
I think it's 1.
And then you're going to be running another 100 and, is that 50 feet, linear feet?
62.
Is that 160, 160 linear feet along their back line? And then on the sideline, you're going to run another 160 linear feet. And I'm not against Lisa Mackey's land?
No, explain that.
So I do want to apologize on the map. For some reason, the, they made the fence go all the way to the street.
But that was the concern I had. That's why I wanted to make sure what we're proving for variance here.
It's only, the fence is only going to come up that side to the back corner of that house on 186. So it's not going to go all the way to Chestnut Street, it's just going to come to the back corner of their house.
To the back corner of the house?
Of the house, right, yes.
Okay, so it isn't going to run all the way because it just, this didn't indicate, you know, on the plan, it just, you know, 100 or 88 linear feet. I just didn't know how far, I know it was 148, but I didn't know where that is. So that's going to run from the southeasterly corner, running roughly northerly 88 feet?
Yes.
Okay. To the back of their house. And then the back is going to use their back line. And then the other part, the 160, is going to be the, on the sideline of Lisa Mackey, which is the westerly line.
Right, and that'll probably come up just to the back end of that asphalt court, that's like a little basketball court.
So the 60 feet, because it wasn't real clear where that is, so it's going to run 60 feet from that pin, which is the southwestly corner of 180, is that, or 186? The Stoddard land?
Yeah, um, is this the southwest?
There's a Stoddard, yes, yeah.
Yeah, so yeah, we're only good, yeah. I think it's like 88 feet. It's not, it's not going to go, it's just going to go to the back corner of the house.
No, no, I understand that. I'm okay with it coming in along their easterly boundary. We're not talking about the westerly boundary. You have a proposed 160 linear feet of fence.
About 88 feet. I'm sorry, it'll be about 88 feet coming up that other side.
The other side, well, you had put 160 on that, so it's 88 feet?
88 feet, yes.
Not 160?
No, that's the total distance.
I think that was a total distance, I'm sorry, that was the total distance of that line. So the 88 feet should come up to where it's even to that back far corner of the asphalt court.
So the 88 feet, yeah, because it's not designated on your plan, so I want to make it clear. Because you're saying propose 160 linear feet of fence on this plan that I have.
There was a misprint from Smith.
I'm sorry, so that was a, that was a misprint from Smith.
Okay, so it's 88, 88 feet there, so I just want to make sure, so when we're granting a variance, we're accurate. 88 feet on the westerly, running from the southwestly corner of the abutting lot, and then running along their property line, 160 feet along the southerly property line of 186. And then running northerly from the southeasterly corner of 186, another 88 feet.
Correct.
Your dimensions are 88 feet, 160, and 88?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I just, that's not what the plan shows, so I wanted to make sure we're accurate in terms of what we're granting. Okay. Go ahead.
Any other questions?
Well, what do you claim is the hardship, the unique situation, the fact that the lot is, the house on the lot and the driveway are set back so far, so that even though this is a front yard of 176, in reality, it's a rear yard for everybody else?
Correct, yes.
That basically what you're arguing? Okay. And have you got any letters of support or any opposition from any of your neighbors? Have you heard anything one way or the other?
We have not heard anything. I mean, we have spoken to the neighbors at 186 and they were okay with it, so. But we have not, I haven't received any return envelopes or...
Okay, and we haven't talked to Lisa Mackey? I assume, is there a house on that, that other piece of the west, or is that just vacant land?
No, there's a, there's a house in the front. Yeah, it's kind of parallel to the 186.
Okay, but the lot goes back much further than 186?
Yeah, her lot goes, yeah, her lot goes much, much further back.
Okay. And what's the, the fence is going to be a vinyl fence?
Yes.
Oh, and vinyl, white, eight foot?
Yes.
Yes, be a solid fence.
Okay. And it'll be white, correct?
Correct.
And I assume the whole purpose of this, I mean, in terms of what is there, is that you're trying to keep basketballs or anybody who's using the yard from having those balls go onto your neighbor's property?
Yeah, we do have five grandchildren under the age of six, so it can get quite busy down there. And then just, you know, giving our neighbors some privacy while, you know, we're there and us privacy.
Yeah, no, and I understand, the eight foot will do that for sure, but it's a front yard setback, so that's why we're here for variance. So if I'm accurate, this fence will start roughly 60 feet from the road and then run back?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And what's the size of the fence? Is that going to be an eight-foot fence the whole way, or is it going to be smaller in that area?
Mark, from that, from that corner, it's going to come down about two sections of eight foot and then drop down to a three-foot-high post and rail fence to meet into the bushes that abut our neighbor's property.
Okay.
Nice, neat, and clean there.
Okay, so it's a rail fence, it'll be a three-foot-high post and rail fence?
Yes.
And will that be wooden or will that be vinyl as well?
It'll be vinyl, it'll be diamond rail, white vinyl.
White vinyl, okay. So that won't be a solid fence, that portion won't be solid once you get past the two eight-foot sections?
No, it will not, it'll, 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 um...
And what's the length of each of those sections roughly?
Eight foot wide.
They're eight by eight?
Yes.
Eight foot high by eight foot wide, okay, so it's about 16 feet of it, okay.
Yep. And there would be no obstruction of any view of anybody pulling out of any driveway? There are bushes already there and everything.
Yep, I see that. Yeah, I'm familiar with the property. Jay LaFave used to be on our board, and I've been to his house on a number of occasions, so.
Well, we'll come back and see what we did to it.
Yeah, so, well, the gate prevented me from getting back to it with my vehicle, so, but that's all right, I mean, I'm familiar with the property. Does any other board member have any questions?
Not me, it sounds pretty good.
Not at this point, I'd like to see if anybody else wants to speak in favor or in opposition first.
Okay.
You do have two audience members?
Yep. Do you want to speak?
Sure, I'm going to pull them in right now, I'll pull the first one in right now.
Hi, are you able to hear me?
Yes. Yeah, just state your name and address for the record, please.
Yeah, so my name is Tara Quagoroly, this is Jeremy Stoddard, my husband, we are at the residence of 186 Chestnut Street.
Yeah.
So the first thing I just want to clarify is we did voice our approval of this fence, we actually opposed the variance for several reasons. I just want to make sure I get that on record.
Okay.
So just for starters, I really don't think that this, you know, basically you're asking to use our yard as their setback, how that setback is calculated. When we purchased our house, one of the reasons we actually decided to go with this house is because it didn't have unabutting back property. And that, knowing that the bylaws were there and that, you know, this type of fence would be prohibited under the current guideline or bylaws, it kind of assured us that we'd maintain the characteristics of the neighborhood, which are very open, like all the properties on our street, along with, you know, what's indicative of what you find in residential zone A, just in general, like larger, open land. Also, we have a drainage issue, just because we have the hill coming down and then we have their grade coming from their, from their home to the street. So that part of our yard gets, gets a significant amount of water. And we want to, we're, one of the things that we're worried about is with a fence of this nature being solid, being so tall, that it's going to block the sunlight and the natural airflow to that area and just compound some of the issues we already have with that part of our yard. So, you know, from, just from an aesthetic view, it's just not something you see, and I think it's going to negatively impact our property value because it's going to make us an outlier when it comes to the look and of everybody else's. You know, you could drive around town, you don't see eight-foot vinyl fences along people's yards in this way. So I just want to make sure we were able to have a chance to say that.
No, no, that's fine, but there's nothing preventing you because it's in your rear yard if you chose to put an eight-foot fence up, correct?
Well, first off, you know, I think we'd have to get a building permit, so I think the town doesn't usually, you know, I think it's six feet is what the town really prefers. And I hear what you're saying about there's nothing preventing us from doing it, but the fact of the matter is, is it's impacting our, you know, property value. You can look at the, you know, I actually went on to, I have their number here, but the appraisal, it's the largest appraisal association in North America, and they actually, they actually recommend fences of this nature because that they do have a negative impact on property values, except for in cases where the property warrants one, and when they say those extreme kind of circumstances is really when it abuts a highway or railroad tracks where you would, you would need that, that level. The other thing too, I wanted to kind of say too, is this is a busy street and the noise is going to be amplified off that solid wall. We've had a very private backyard until this year, when, you know, the natural fence that was on our property line was taken down. We had, you know, a lot of foliage there, and they cleared that out to make room for the fence, and that's why there's now, we, now we have that more openness there. But prior to that, we never could see our neighbor behind us, and it was, you know, nothing ever came, they had five children that played on that basketball court all the time, or four or five, I can't remember exactly. But, but we never had any issues in the 10 years we've been here with anything coming into our yard. I know another thing she mentioned on the application too, for their request, was our driveway as a safety issue. But there's, there's a clump of trees that kind of separate that side of our yard from their yard. So it would be almost impossible for anybody to go through them, they're like 60-foot tall cedars. And then our driveway goes in the opposite direction, so, you know, I hear her safety concern. I appreciate the fact that she's looking out for our privacy, but, you know, we, we were kind of happy with the way it was. And an eight-foot solid vinyl fence is more like a wall, so it's going to also impact how we work in our yard. It's, like I said, I'm worried about that drainage issue, and they're not going to have any leeway without coming onto our property to be able to maintain that side of the fence. So it means that we're going to have to power wash it when it gets dirty, it means we're going to have to mow around it and weed whack out, and it's going to really kind of impact a lot of the work we do on our side too.
Well, we can, we can also ask that is part of the variance, it'd be offset on the line so that they maintain the fence on their side of the fence, so that you wouldn't have that, that it be X number of feet into their property, so that they do have adequate room to maintain and work on their fence.
Yeah, I mean, to me, it's the wall, so that would kind of fall under that three-foot buffer. If they wanted that, that would give them plenty of room to get back there with a mower and maintain it.
Well, that's what I'm saying, it's in terms of, if they put a fence in, I mean, they could either put, to contain the balls, they don't necessarily need a solid fence. They could get away with like a picket-type fence, and I'm not sure it has to be eight feet tall to keep balls from going into your yard. They probably could accomplish the same thing with something less than an eight-foot fence.
Well, that's kind of my point, as I think what's allowed under the bylaws today, the 20, you know, up to 25% solid and four feet tall for a front yard, seems more than adequate for what they're trying to do, if they're just trying to get that separation and keep their kids, their grandkids from running into our yard. You know, even an eight-foot fence, a ball could go over, but like I said, with the trees and some of the other things there, I really highly doubt that that's going to happen. It's never been a problem in the past. So to me, what's currently allowed under the existing bylaws seem adequate for what they're trying to do without, you know, if you were to not grant that variance in this case.
No, no, I understand, and that's why we're getting your input, we wanted just to make sure, because it was represented that they had talked to you and you had no problem with it. Obviously, that's not true.
No, that's not the case. They had, they had mentioned to us that that was something they were thinking of doing, but they never gave us any specifics. So the first we really heard of it was, will we have a notice?
Okay. Anybody else that wants to comment? Your name, please?
Pulling him, pulling her in right now.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, is it my turn?
Yes.
Hi.
Name and the address, please?
Yeah, Lisa Mackey at 190 Chestnut. How are you?
Good, Lisa, how are you?
I'm good. I want to echo some of the things that Tara said.
Yep.
So I'm just going to go through this, you have under number four, required findings for granting a variance, A, B, C, D. Maybe it'll be easiest, I just went through each of those, okay?
Yep.
So I'm going to start with A, you know, about the soil conditions and the topography. When Mr. Hasty first started doing some clearing along my boundary there, I asked him to be mindful of the drainage and the erosion because it's pretty severe, you know that it's a wetland back there. And it gets quite spring. And he did bring in one of those, you know, Billy goat grinders, and he cleared the undergrowth along that entire section of our property. He also cleared behind Tara and Jeremy's property. He also had two dead trees removed and at least one living tree on my side. So I'm going to tell you honestly, the erosion impact was immediate. You know, I've just never had water like that, it actually cut through the dirt, made some serious rivulets coming down the bank from there. So that's, that's A. Now on to B. It says that it would involve substantial hardship. So I'm just going to go to what you were saying, I think it was you, Mark, about it could be addressed in other ways. I think that you can address privacy and safety in a number of ways that don't involve an eight-foot solid white plastic fence. As far as the safety goes, you know, I do have a pool in my yard, yes, but it is fenced. And I raised four of my own children here, right in this yard with the pool, and I did it safely. So I know that Mrs. Hasty said that the kids are always supervised, so I'm pretty sure that if she's out there and they're supervised, and I also have, you know, the required fence around my pool, things should be okay. You know, I'm glad that she's being mindful of that and not negligent, so that's good. But her grandchildren have already been in her yard a bunch of times, so they already know I have a pool. So it's not like they're not going to know that there's a pool there, it's definitely there. Now on to C, I don't really have anything to say about C, but I do have something to say about D. I really feel as though this will lower my property value, it's not going to enhance it. She says that it's going to enhance the property for everyone, it's not going to enhance my property. I have a beautiful piece of property, I worked really hard to maintain it, and it's landscaped in a lovely way, I do it all myself, so it's only going to be a lowering of my property value. Now, I've got to say that this is quite funny because I had one quick encounter with Mr. Hasty, you know, when they first started clearing out there, when I asked him to be mindful of the erosion. Then the two of them came down to my house for a little visit to, I think, show me a brochure and, and, you know, try to convince me that this was going to be a good idea. And, you know, I told them then and there that it was not appealing to me at all. I showed them my pool fence, I said, no, I have an open fence, it's really much nicer. And I said, an eight-foot fence, an eight-foot solid fence, that's awful. And Samantha Hasty said, maybe not eight feet, I don't want it to look like a penitentiary. So there you go, she knows that it's not attractive. So I'm just really not at all interested in having that type of fence. We really have to try to address the privacy and safety concerns in a way that's more attractive to both Tara and Jeremy and me that still meets the, you know, the concerns of the Hasties. That's pretty much it for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, anybody have, people? Any rebuttal from the petitioner?
Yes, yes. So, okay, so on the, on the water issue, when, it was over the winter, but there was a drainage, when the water, when the water comes off a prospect, it comes down the property and then crosses over, over our driveway, and then of course down, down Chestnut that way. We discovered that there was a drainage pipe that was clogged on the prospect side of our property, that we had to bring in equipment to dig up the, I don't know, the sewage drainage, and then we had found out that that drain had been clogged with debris and trash for years. So that has been cleared and fixed. And, I mean, our driveway was, we've gotten saturated, but since then, we haven't had the water that we had when we first moved in. So we think that that water issue has been fixed to some, you know, to a big degree. I don't think that we ever, we ever, we never went on anybody's property per se. I mean, I mean, yes, we did walk over to their properties and do talk to them, but about removing anything, anything that was removed was on our property. And the brush that we cleared away on the backside of Tara and Jeremy's property, it was all prickers and brush. It was just basically going through and cleaning up that area to make it look nicer. We would like to plant some grass down there, if possible.
Did you, did you, essentially within 100 feet of the wetland, did you, did you ask for permits on that? From the Conservation or filed a notice of intent when you did that work?
That was not part of wetlands there.
That wasn't part of the wetlands.
It's not, you're within 100 feet of, you got a 50-foot buffer, it looks like it worked within 100 feet of it if you add another 50 feet to the wetland line.
I mean, we didn't, we didn't pull in any equipment or anything, we just had rakes and stuff out there.
And I understand, but anytime you do work within 100 feet of a resource area, you got to do a notice of intent and determination for the Conservation Commission.
So, yes, it was within 100 feet.
Right, and so you didn't file anything to do the work, you just did it?
No, there was no problem, there was, there was part, that is not part of the wetland area right there.
Well, I know it's not part, but the, if wetland area is marked on the plan with the W lines, if you measure 100, any work done within 100 feet of those W lines, which you did some work definitely within that, you have to get a permit or determination by the Conservation Commission when you do the work, that's all. And what I understand, you didn't get any, nothing went before the Conservation.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I understand.
We just thought we could just go and clear it, yeah, just the debris.
But you may call it debris, but it does absorb stuff and things, and it can have an impact on the wetland, that's why they, they want to have the permit so the Conservation Commission can make a determination on whether or not what you were going to do with clear would have an adverse impact, i.e. were they going to have erosion into the wetlands as a result, that type of stuff. That's why you have to file the notice of intent, so be careful in the future when you're doing stuff within 100 feet of the...
But we can, I mean, if we decide to just pick up the dry leaves and stuff, that's, we don't get, I need a permit for that.
No, that's raking, but when you're starting to brush and things of that nature, that does have an impact potentially on, on the erosion, the shade that's near the wetlands, and the ability to retain the water in terms of what's there for the wetland. So it's not for us to determine, because I'm not on the Conservation Commission, but that's the purpose of the law, is that when you do work within 100 feet of the wetland line, in terms of clearing, brush, cutting trees, that type of a thing, that you get permission. The only, the other concerning thing was according to Ms. Mackey, she had indicated, did you cut down, you cut down a tree that was on her property?
No.
No, we did not.
I think that there is, I think that there is a misconception though of where her property line is and our property line. Even though ours is staked out, even though ours is, we have it staked out, I do believe she thinks that there are, that her property line is further in than what it is. Because she had some stakes, there's some stakes in there from an old horse corral that Glenn was pulling up, but she told that those were hers. told that those were hers, but they're, they're on our property line or in a little.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not speaking for the property line. It's just an allegation that she managed to.
And then, I mean, and just not to, not to throw stones or anything other than that, that, um, the pool is not, that fence is not pool code. The gate is, is not a, not up to pool code. And there are holes in the fence that would be easily gotten into. So, I, but I don't, you know, that's, I just wanna throw that out there, because I mean,
Yeah, and that's not before us tonight, but I understand what you're saying.
So, um, I don't, yeah, so.
Yeah, it's just you can't just willy-nilly when you're dealing anywhere within, because you've got a, a difficult site there. Uh, most of your site is within a hundred feet of the wetlands, the way they're, you know, a lot of wetlands back there. And anytime you do work, your clearing brush, uh, planting additional kind of brush, that type of thing, or cutting trees in that area, you have to go to the Conservation Commission because that can have an adverse impact on the wetlands, and they have to make that determination to whether or not to allow it and to make sure that proper erosion controls and things. But that's not the issue here. Uh, I guess my question is, i- is, is theoretical, is, what's wrong if we put in a four-foot fence? You know, a, a picket fence type thing, that wouldn't that accomplish the same thing?
Well, I would, I would go down to six foot, because I, in the, in their backyard, we're basically looking at all their, all their dirt and all their debris and all the stuff in their yard. So I'd rather not look at that. I was just trying to make it look neat and clean so that they don't have to see us and we don't have to see them because they park all their vehicles behind there. I don't know if any of those vehicles are insured or not insured. They're putting all their trailers back there. And if you're running a business in East Sun Meadow, you must have a fence around your property to, to, to secure your landscape trailers and all your stuff. And that stuff's all back there.
Okay, no, and I, and I understand. But once again, you're in a, unfortunately for you, you're in a front yard here because of the way the ordinance reads. And I know it's a unique situation and it, uh, you know, the, the topography, not the topography, but the shape of the lot in relation to the rest, uh, could create, uh, a, a unique situation. And the question is whether or not this is an adequate hardship. And I'm having trouble with that.
Okay. I mean, I would, I would, I would go down to six feet if, if the board would allow, allow us to for that hardship, having to look at all that.
Yeah, I mean, there's other ways to, to, to shield it without a, a six-foot fence, too. I mean, you could put up a, a, a non-solid fence and then.
I could go semi-private, you know, uh, with a six foot. I could go eight-foot semi-private. I'd rather go eight-foot semi-private if I could. I just don't wanna look at any of that stuff back there because it's kind of, uh, and, and I sorted a property.
Yeah, no, I understand. But, I mean, before, there was a, a natural buffer, from what I understand, but that's now gone.
Yeah, buffer. It wasn't really a natural, it was just a bunch of prickers that were only about three foot tall. And, you know, the balls were going in there and the kids were getting, you know, getting prickers on them, but, um, I just wanna clean up. I, I, the house is a beautiful piece of property, and I'm just trying to make it look neat and clean and, and then not have the balls and the kids go onto their property because it is pretty tight with that basketball court with stuff going down there to, uh,
Well, it looks like, if I'm reading the plan, that the asphalt court is a little square that's on that plant, correct?
Yeah, but it's a little bit closer to the line than, than what, than what the, what the square looks.
I don't know. I'm just going by the plans that were presented. They, you know, the two points I have, it looks about the same spot. And, 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 you know, I don't have the scale in front of me, but if I map that out, it seems to me it's a good 30, 40 feet from either property line.
Yes, it is. It's, it's a little bit more. And there's a shed that's going in behind the asphalt court, uh, next week. So I just wanted everything to be secure and, and neat and clean.
Yeah, no, no. I mean, they, as I said, the zoning bylaw allows, I believe, uh, up to a four-foot solid fence. Is that accurate?
Yes, it is.
So that, you know, you wouldn't need a, a variance or anything to put that in. And, uh, that would accomplish, I think, the same thing, especially with the 30 or 40 feet. I don't think you're gonna have a ball bouncing that high, 30 or 40 feet away from the, uh, you know, the asphalt court. I think a four-foot fence would more than meet your needs. You know, in terms of keeping the kids out of the prickers and at the same time, uh, providing the buffer that you need. And then you get to do other plantings on either side of the fence that would help with any visual type things, arbor edie or whatever, that helps block the view.
Without, without being rude, I don't wanna look at their mess anymore.
And I understand, but there are other options other than putting an eight-foot fence or a six-foot fence up solid.
Yeah.
That would accomplish the same thing.
Yeah, I'd rather go, if we could go to six, I would like to go to six.
Yeah, but I don't think I, without a variance, I don't think we can grant that. Am I accurate on that? Even if it's a six?
Yes.
Six solid?
Yes. So, uh, What, semi-private? If we could go six-foot semi-private?
Well, it depends on the, the space between it. I don't know what you mean by semi-private.
Well, there, it's about a one-inch gap between each, each board.
I'd have to, I, I'm not sure. I know they, they talk about solid fence, but I thought in the front yard, it was limited to four foot, four foot.
Yeah.
Four foot quarter?
Yeah.
So it, it, it allows for quarter solid. I don't know with your semi, whether your semi-fence meets that or not.
Yes, it would, but it would be, it, it, yes, yes, it would meet, it would meet the variance of a, of a, of a, of a semi-private, the, um, with the spacing, but then I'd have to get the variance to go to six foot tall or eight foot.
Correct. You, you would be looking for a two-foot variance for, for the private speak. And, and I guess that's the issue, in terms of, uh, there are other alternatives other than a six-foot, you know, you know. This is supposed to be granted where there is a hardship, uh, where there typically isn't many other alternatives. I guess the concern that I have is that there are potential other alternatives, um, to either a six or eight-foot fence. But that's my opinion. I don't know what other board members feel.
I had the same feeling that, you know, there is alternatives, and I take even a, you know, a fence that meets the zoning laws and then natural plantings to make a more solid buffer is an option, as you, as Mark said.
Any other board members have any input? Does, uh, any of the butters wanna have any further say? So no, I hear, I don't hear anybody wanting to pipe in as the opposition. Okay, you do. Is this Ms. Mackey?
Yeah, I, no, this is Tara Quagroly, and I just wanna.
Okay, Tara, yeah.
Meeting, so I'm a little, this is a little bit of a learning curve for me, so thank you, guys. But, um, I just wanna, just first off, I just wanna thank, um, the Hasties for clearing out that, um, drain because it was really causing a menace on our driveway. So thank you very much. I, I, I do wanna just kinda clarify two other things. About, you know, the water is not just coming from that side. It's coming, it's just because of the nature of the yard. There's a lot of, of saturation in that area that comes down. So I just wanna separate that. There's two, those two issues there. And then I also just wanna reassure the, the Hasties that the, the dirt and the vehicles they see right now are temporary. We just put a patio in and give some other landscaping to our yard. So it is a bit of a mess, but it's temporary and it's gonna look great when it's done. So thank you. Oh, and we don't have a business. So you can, you can, I can assure you that. There's no business in, you know, running out of this house. So thanks.
Yeah. No, that's fine. Thank you. Any, uh, questions from the board? And everybody satisfied in terms of what they heard? Does someone wanna make a motion, pro or con? And, or first, do a motion to close the public hearing?
Mark, I think that Lisa Mackey wants to comment as well.
Oh, Lisa Mackey wants to say the finding.
You're muted, Lisa.
Sorry, sorry. I just realized that. Um, when you're talking about the spacing on the fence, and it's, if it's, so it has to be less than one-quarter solid? Is that correct?
Can't be more than one-quarter solid.
Okay, so a one-inch spacing between, a one-inch space between boards is going to create something that's less than one-quarter solid?
Well, that's my concern. I mean, it, it, it seems to me they could put a one-quarter solid fence, uh, in there that would probably accomplish the same thing in terms of keeping balls from rolling into your property or your butters' property. I'm not sure it needs to be six or eight feet tall in order to meet that requirement. But they, they, they wouldn't need a variance. And if they wanted to build that type of fence, they'd have an absolute right to get a permit to do that. And, uh, they probably still should be going before the Conservation Commission because they're putting a fence, a permanent structure within a hundred feet of a wetland and could get permission from the Conservation Commission, uh, you know, if, if that's what it is. I don't know the exact distance. You know, to 160 feet. I assume 160 feet was to the buffer line from the, the corner, but I, I, I don't know. Because it's not labeled here. But you, they reduced it to 88 feet. So, uh, if you add the 50 feet and you reduce it from 160 to 88, if the fence stops there, you may be outside the wetland line.
Okay, 'cause that 160 is on my property line.
Correct. Well, that's what I'm saying. That 160, he's, he basically telling me they're only gonna be putting 88 with fence, not 160 as shown on their proposal. So what, what he had indicated to me was that that line on your property would go from the south-westerly corner of the Quagley Arle's, Olle's land, down 88 feet. To the basically roughly end of the basketball court. And then it would run the whole southerly distance along, uh, 186, and then run another 88 feet with 16 of the 88 feet, uh, being, uh, eight feet high and the rest being, uh, a four-foot or a three-foot high post-rail fence, which they could put up anyplace.
Right.
The post-rail part of it.
But now the whole thing's gonna be four feet.
Well, he can, if, if he builds it to the law, he can do, there's nothing we can say. If we turn down the variance, he decides he wants to put a fence that complies with the current zoning, he can do that. There's nothing, he doesn't need a permit from us to do that.
Okay.
Okay.
Yep, thank.
So, uh, any, any, any other input before we take a motion to, uh, close the public hearing? Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm ready. Motion to close.
Second?
Second.
Second, okay. Uh, all those in favor signify? Aye, Mark. Aye, Mark Beglane.
Aye, Fran Dean.
Aye, Brian Hill.
So, that's fine. So, thanks. Okay, so we've got, it, the public hearing is now closed. It's just discussion among the board. Do, anybody wanna make a motion, one way or the other here? Either for or against the, 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 I'm the chairman, so I can't really make a motion, being the chairman.
All right. All, this is Charles Gray. I'll move, um, that we deny the request for a variance. It's, it's actually a really interesting, um, request in my mind because, you know, I think that they satisfy some elements of, of the variance request, but not all. Um, the, it, it's certainly a unique, a uni- unique land piece. The issue that I have is I think that the hardship wasn't proven. And, and also it, it can pose a detriment to, to neighboring properties. So, um, I'll move to deny the variance request.
So anybody second that?
Brian Hill's second.
Okay. Uh, we'll take a roll call vote, um, if you would. Bethany?
Yep. Uh, Charles Gray?
Aye.
Brian Hill?
Aye.
Mark Beglane?
Aye.
Fran Dean?
Aye.
James Channing?
Aye.
So the, the variance has been denied. Uh, there's a 20-day appeal period from once this gets filed with the town clerk, in which you can appeal the decision to the court if you want. As I said, you could still put up a, a fence that does comply in the front yard with the, the town's requirement without any permit from us. But do be careful if you're gonna be working, uh, within a hundred feet of a, of a wetland so you don't run afoul of the Conservation Commission because they may put a cease and desist order on you, even if you legally could do that. So, uh, be careful. But you do have a 20-day appeal period to file an action from when. And usually takes us about accurate, Bethany, to get the decision, it's not, you know, typed up and then signed and filed.
Yep, that's correct.
So that, basically, w- once we file with the town clerk, you can file an appeal with the court if you feel that, uh, the denial wasn't justified. And, uh, this will get recorded. Uh, this doesn't need to be recorded because it's been denied. So, that's where we are at this point. So, anybody have any questions? Do we have any other business? Do we wanna, or do we wanna do a motion to adjourn?
Uh, you just have the meeting minutes.
We got the minute. Do you wanna approve the minutes from the, uh, was it the February meeting?
I approve the minutes of the February meeting.
Anybody second? Someone second?
Brian's second.
Okay. Well, uh, do a voice vote again.
Aye.
Aye. Aye, Fran Dean.
Aye, Brian.
Aye, Mark Beglane.
Aye, James Channing.
And Brian was the mover, so.
Yeah, aye.
So, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
So, before we, before we second that, was there something else on the agenda regarding, um,
Well, I think the last thing we wanted to talk about was those LED lights and, and doing some amendment to, to the zoning that somebody needs to address or to the, uh, either the town council or somebody to change the, the wording, because it's in today's day and age to say that you're not gonna use LED lighting on signs, I think is a little antiquated.
Right. Um, So I read that, was that a suggestion in there, or was that just what the current law rates?
Well, was it, it was somebody to write something, I think, to the, uh, the board to, you know, when they do, uh, zone change type things in the zoning ordinance, to do something to address the, the prohibition against using LED lights on signs. That needs to be addressed. Back when it was first, uh, put in place, those, uh, LED lights were a little garish. And I think that's what they were against. But I think today, almost everything is LED, LED, but, so, but I think the, the prohibition is somewhat antiquated and needs to be updated. But that's not our, you know, we can only make a recommendation to the, uh, the town council to have someone, when they do the next amendments to the zoning bylaws, do some sort of provision to, to, you know, eliminate that.
That was my next question, wherever that stemmed from. But that's.
Yeah, we, we could do a letter just saying, you know, we've run into this at this hearing and that it, you know, we think it, it tries to be done, you know, because it, we believe it's outdated in today's day and age. And it, it, next time they amend the zoning bylaw, that it probably should be, the reference to no LED light should be removed from the zoning bylaw for signs. And I don't, I, I could, I could put together a letter to that effect that we would send to the town council, but it's, you know, uh, and copy maybe to the planning board, because the planning board typically is the one who makes references for zone type changes, you know, making zone changes.
And Mark, I think that makes sense. I think you just make.
And Mark, I think that makes sense. I think you just make, just make it clear that we're not trying to change the substance. Wouldn't, at least, I wouldn't be in favor of changing the substance of it. It's just that.
Yeah, because the absolute prohibition, no LED lights was in there. And I'll get the exact language and ask that that language be deleted.
Yeah. But that's. Yes.
Yeah, okay. And I'll, Bethany, I'll put together in the next week or so a letter that we can do to the town council and give a copy to the planning, planning board.
Okay, sounds good.
Okay.
There you go.
Any other discussion?
Nope, I think we're good.
So we'll adjourn. Thank you for joining. I gotta figure out what's wrong with my, my, my audio, because it just doesn't come in. Something happened. I don't know what I did to it. So, thank you.
Okay, thanks, guys.
Have a good night, everybody.
Okay, good night. Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Bye.